Council chambers, if you would now please rise with me in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Granquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Claussen?
Here.
Murran?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
Vile?
Here.
Right, we look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
And a motion for approval of the full agenda.
So moved, your honor.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Takes us to item number eighteen on the agenda, public hearings and related action. I will open this public hearing for the mayor and city council sitting as a board of equalization to levy a special assessment for mowing charges, litter and waste removal on the property located at four oh one North Fourth Street in the amount of eight hundred ninety-seven dollars fifty-one cents. And to do so, to begin, I will look for a motion to adjourn as mayor and council and convene as board of equalization.
I'll make the motion.
Aye.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, to kick off the discussion on this, I think we hear from John. Evening, John.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council. The city received complaints regarding the need for mowing at the property at four oh one North Fourth Street in early August, notification was given for the property to be mowed. At that time, we notified First Nationwide Postal Holdings, the owner of the, on behalf of the owner of the property. There had also been indication that the property was under a lease arrangement. For that reason, we went ahead and contacted the U.S. Postal Service as a leaseholder there. Both of those notices were received and the property was subsequently mowed in August, early August. We received additional complaints in the latter part of September and notices were sent out again at that time. The property was mowed following receipt of those notices and that brings us to the billings that we have at hand.
Okay. We did this earlier this year as well, correct, John? Do you know what the total amount that we've?
I think that the, I think that the June, or the June billing, I believe, was something in the neighborhood of four hundred and sixty dollars, something of that sort.
Okay. So it's been twice this year, that?
We mowed it total three times.
Three times?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, any questions, comments for John on this?
Okay.
Will we get, do you anticipate we're gonna have the same monkey catching ours in the wintertime if we get snow?
Well, snow is, uh, snow is a different animal. We, they would be contacted about their responsibility to mow and I believe they are aware of that. I am not aware of any arrangements that they have in place to take care of that situation.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to come forward at this time, do so now? It's one of those that will continue to follow a similar process, I think, until we have some clarification on who is in charge of taking responsibility for this property. As we've been communicated with, there's litigation between the post office and the property owner, which makes pinning someone down on this challenging, but we will, we will continue doing the work if needed and, and collecting the bills. Any questions or comments on this? If not, I'll close the hearing and would look for a motion to adjourn as the board of equalization and reconvene as mayor and council.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, item number nineteen, look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty seventeen dash eighty-eight, levying a special assessment in the amount of eight hundred ninety-seven dollars fifty-one cents against property at four oh one North Fourth Street for mowing, litter and waste removal.
Your Honor, I move consideration of resolution number twenty seventeen dash eighty-eight.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty seventeen eighty-eight is adopted.
Okay, item number twenty, I will open this public hearing to receive a report on findings and suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Review Committee as required by state statutes, section eighteen dash twenty-seven fifteen. And Randy, look to you to kick?
Yes, Your Honor. As you mentioned, statutes require cities that have an O B eight forty program to have a Citizens Advisory Review Committee, or C R C. The citizens serving on Norfolk's C R C are Cindy Morrow, Jim Mangles, Aaron Otten, Jan Einspar and Kathy Means. I serve as an ex officio, non-voting member on the C R C. Statutes require the C R C to meet at least once in every six-month period and report to the city council on its findings and suggestions at a public hearing called for that purpose. C R C met on November twenty-eighth and their report, including their review checklist, is included in the agenda packet. As noted in the C R C report, the C R C found the city's economic development program is operating in compliance with the budget and voter-approved economic development plan. And answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Randy on this? It's a public hearing, anyone wishing to make comment can do so. Thank you, Randy.
Yep.
No discussion, I'll close the hearing. We'll move to item number twenty-one, open this public hearing on the fourteen dash C R dash one oh seven Community Development Block Grant Project Available to Local Governments for Community Economic Development Activities. And Jan? Kick us off on this, please, if you would.
A second public hearing is required for every C D B G funded project to obtain citizen input, comment and opinions regarding the progress of the performance. For the fourteen C R one oh seven grant, the City of Norfolk received two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of C D B G funds for comprehensive revitalization activities in a targeted area, which included two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for twelve-inch water main reconstruction under Madison Avenue between First and Seventh Street. There was seven thousand dollars for general admin. So the city also provided a hundred and forty thousand dollars for, in matching funds. The total project was four hundred and twenty, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Any questions on that?
Questions for Jan? Jan, I should have had you state your name and who you're with.
Jan Merrill with Northeast Nebraska Development District.
Okay. Another example, I think, of the city leveraging state resources for necessary infrastructure improvement, particularly in the downtown area, so. Thank you, Jan. Okay, it's a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now? Not, I will close the hearing and we'll move to our regular agenda. Item number twenty-two, look for a motion to consider authorization for the mayor to authorize the City of Norfolk's stormwater management plan and execute the City of Norfolk's notice of intent to discharge stormwater under the newly issued National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems, general permit for small municipal separate storm sewer systems.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay. Todd, oh, Steve's gonna give us some background on this.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This is a renewal of our national permit to discharge our stormwater systems into the local bodies of water. We've been working on this, oh, for better part, I guess, of twenty seventeen. The M S four, that, that notice of intent to discharge is a function of the national discharge permit that the state of Nebraska has. The stormwater management plan is a supplemental document to that that discusses how we monitor those discharges within our storm sewer system. It is the initial plan, there are another five or six documents associated with that that we're currently working on as well. I've invited Jesse Poore from F H U to visit a little bit about the progress that we've been on this over the past year and just talk a little bit about what you expect here in the next six months.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, as Steve was mentioning, Clean Water Act passed in nineteen ninety-nine led Norfolk to see their first stormwater permit in two thousand and one. Like it or hate it, the nationwide M S four permitting requirement was here to stay. Norfolk's been responsibly managing and successfully managing their stormwater quality related to construction sites, municipal good housekeeping, stormwater runoff, education outreach since that time, with some really smart, wise staff who have put programs in place to be in compliance, which is great. In two thousand and fifteen, a peer city in Nebraska was audited by EPA and that audit led to some findings for program non-compliance that raised some yellow flags around the state. In two thousand and sixteen, the State Transportation Agency was also audited by a consultant-hired EPA inspector. And so those audits kind of raised some questions about where is program compliance and how are we effectively meeting those objectives? Norfolk works with a lot of other peer communities like Carney, Hastings, North Platte, Scottsbluff, statewide. The goal is to be consistent with the other communities around the state. And I think Norfolk's done a great job of that in being a player in responsible stormwater management. But these events did create some urgency, what level of compliance was needed, so out of that, this stormwater management plan template was created. What the document you have in front of you was contrived by that group of peers who wanted to have a standardized method of reporting stormwater compliance activities, things that the city does routinely. So in that regard, it's nothing unique, other than it has been adopted and modified to Norfolk-specific program requirements and staff. And the objectives that are in that permit stormwater management plan reflect the effort that Norfolk puts into protecting water quality in the city. Management of stormwater discharges from new development and redevelopment projects is a project that's underway, right now being evaluated in the City of Norfolk. The one document that Steve was referring to, we're looking at with new development and redevelopment requirements for stormwater runoff requirements needing to meet retention requirements for stormwater quality, which is currently a requirement in the City of Norfolk, but the evaluation is currently looking at, can that be done more on a regional basis rather than individual development projects? The project was put on hold during transition of staff, they're ready to ramp up here over the next three, four months and make a recommendation to the council, so that'll be coming down the pipe fairly soon. And I can answer any other questions along with Steve if there are any.
Thank you, Jesse. Any questions for Steve?
So if I understood the comment earlier, like it or not, we're stuck with it, pretty much is the thing. So the regional application of this really is the only wiggle room we have in this, as opposed to carrying the weight ourselves or doing it regionally? And if I'm correct, well, that is all the, all the wiggle room that we have in it and probably the best way to approach it.
Yep, and so the advantage of doing it regionally is it takes, it's not gonna take the burden of that developer away, it just takes the burden off of that property so that he has, he or she has the potential to develop more of the property itself and we can relocate the, burden might not be the right word, but the stormwater quality portion of that to a regional area. It might fit better in.
All right, thank you.
All right, I want to thank the city staff for staying up to date on this, and Jesse, thanks for your time for being here. Any discussion, council on this? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item number twenty-three, I'd look for a motion to consider approval of an engineering services contract with Black and Beach Management Consulting LLC to conduct the wastewater rate study for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
So moved.
Okay. Todd? Give us some backup, Steve? Okay.
I'll, I'll kind of kick it off and Todd's here to answer any more detailed questions, but we've had rate studies done in the past, it's been a while since we've had one. We've had some fairly significant projects here in the last two, three years with sanitary sewer extensions and we're looking at a couple more fairly significant projects in the near future and we felt that it was in our best interest to bring Black and Beach back to the table and look at those, look at those sanitary sewer rates. We're very interested, not just in looking at our rate here, but also kind of comparing that to our peers. It's very difficult to do a peer-to-peer comparison, we all have different ways in which we bill out that service and so to have Black and Beach's expertise in that area regionally, we felt was a benefit at this time. If there's any specifics, I'd ask Todd to come up too and be able to answer any questions that I may not be able to.
I think Steve summarized it well, just to recap what's in your agenda, we just recently in September had a six percent rate increase, year before that was eight, and that was all done internally with the internal staff here at the city and we felt that it's been ten years since we've done a wa- wastewater rate, actual study and rate increase study of what we need to do going forward with the projects that we got on the plate right now to evenly balance all the rates amongst all the residential, commercial and industrial clients that we have.
You said ten years, Todd?
Ten years, two thousand and eight's when we done this last.
The major projects that Steve referred to are mostly maintenance of the plant and, and exterior lateral stuff getting it to it, it's not really plant expansion, or are we planning a plant expansion?
It, it's related to all the sewer lines that we're doing for the developments that's going on. Some components of this capital improvement program is both sewer lines and wastewater plant combined.
Any other? Any further questions? Thank you, Todd. Any further discussion, council? Todd, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Moving us to item number twenty-four, I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five oh seven as amended, approving the final plan development on property generally located half-mile south from the intersection of Omaha Avenue and South Twenty-Fifth Street. To note, ordinance number fifty-five oh seven as amended, pass, as passed, as amended, passed on first reading at the November sixth, two thousand and seventeen city council meeting and was tabled at the November twentieth, two thousand and seventeen city council meeting. Thusly, to move forward, would look for a motion to take off the table.
I'll make the motion.
Second, aye.
Okay, motion is second to take this item off the table. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, we then look for a motion on second reading for consideration of ordinance number fifty-five oh seven.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, and Val, could you start us off with some background on this, please?
Yes, thank you, just to recap where this was left off, on the November sixth meeting, the city council did make an amendment to the plan development as it was proposed and in the agenda packet at that night. What you amended it to was to add language into number eighteen on the plan development that any change in access is stated in the final P D must come back through public process of planning commission and city council for review and approval. And so that's what is coming forward, I believe. And because of that, the packet does not contain the amended plan development as requested, that was not turned in by the developers. They did turn in a letter that is part of the agenda packet that states that they do not agree to the amendment or the action of the city council and request a vote on our plan development with the original concept. So I guess it is up to you all as to where you want to take this tonight, but I will say just as we move forward, there are the zone change and the plat also on there. And so if the plan development does not go through as it is right now, the plat is not correct, so they're getting relief on the plat based on plan development. So just kind of keep that in mind too, that there's kind of, everything's linked together. So if something changes, that potentially could change also, not necessarily, it, it just depends.
Okay, thanks, Val. Any questions for Val on that, for the process here? If not, I'm gonna open this up to discussion and hopefully that'll clarify a little bit better where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, members of the council, I'm Dave Domina, and I'm here tonight because I do have some new information to share with you about this and I think it's important that you have it in light of the vote that you cast a couple of meetings ago and before you tabled this. So this is the first thing you need to know. The access to the West presented two different possibilities for these gentlemen, one through a neighbor's property, the neighbor is an unwilling seller, so they cannot acquire that access. The second potential access was across property controlled by a corporation that is owned or substantially owned and controlled by Mr. Merkel, who is one of the investors in Majestic Lake Estates Incorporated, for whom I speak tonight. We know since your last meeting that the lender, who has been involved conceptually in this since the beginning, is now committed to refusing to finance the project with Thirty-seventh Street access. So we need to report to you that Majestic Lake Estate Incorporated cannot develop the project with Thirty-seventh Street access. And it must therefore, as a matter of being responsible to you, inform you of that so you can, I suppose, do one of two things, either vote this project down tonight or refer it back to your planning commission to see if there's some other possibility. Of course, Majestic Lake would love to have you just vote to approve it to Twenty-Fifth Street, but we know that's been the controversy in the past and we want to make it clear that the project that's before you can't go forward. In the plat that's before you, there are three specific paragraphs in the panel of eighteen points that describes the project, and I'll tell you specifically which of those three paragraphs are directly impacted by this information. Paragraphs fourteen and eighteen refer to Thirty-seventh Street access, and so that would be an impossibility. The legal description of the easement in the plat also refers to a route that would be Thirty-seventh Street access, so that legal description would be impossible. The other paragraph is paragraph seventeen, where the developer commits to develop the project promptly, and maybe the word is even stronger than promptly, but that's the gist of it, and that would be an impossibility because of the action of the bank. And I can say one other thing, the bank is a lender well-informed with the history of this project, following it closely, and the bank has expressed its position categorically in writing after a loan committee meeting. So we're not here to quarrel with sentiments on one side or another, we want you to know what the facts are, that Majestic Lake, which has had authority to speak for care hold, which is technically the submitter of this proposal, Majestic Lake has a contract, of course, cannot go forward with Thirty-seventh Street. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Domina? Not at this moment.
Thank you very much. And by the way, those comments, I think, apply to all three of these subjects, so I won't return on the next two items on your agenda if you'll treat these comments as applying to all three, Mr. Domina.
Okay, we're open to discussion. If anyone else wishes to come forward?
Good evening, Mark Fitzgerald, on behalf of Volcraft and Nucor Cold Finish. If that's the situation, I would ask that the council vote this down. The history of this, and I may miss some of the back and forth here, but originally, this plan came before the planning commission with the Twenty-Fifth Street access. There was a long hearing concerning the Twenty-Fifth Street access before the planning commission and the planning commission referred this out to an opportunity to discuss the virtues of Twenty-Fifth versus Thirty-seventh Street access. There was a meeting attended by the interested parties and at that point, it flipped back to the Twenty-Fifth Street only possibility by the developers. Then Thirty-seventh Street came back into the picture and this matter came before the planning commission again on June sixth, two thousand and seventeen, and the Majestic Lake developers did not have an agreement with the Melchers yet to use the Melcher property in order to access Thirty-seventh Street, but the developers were seeking approval of the plan development with the idea and they told the planning commission at that time that the Thirty-seventh Street was virtually a done deal. The piece, the planning commission was told that the Melcher easement was essentially done and at that point in time, my clients and I were concerned that the Melcher deal had not been put together and that without some specific development language prohibiting the use of Twenty-Fifth Street as an access, that that Twenty-Fifth Street access might somehow come back into play again. So at that point, in the last summer, we sought some assurance at that meeting that the Twenty-Fifth Street opportunity or situation wouldn't come into play and then, very oddly, the developers who had assured the planning commission that Thirty-seventh Street was virtually a done deal, flipped again and said, wait a second, we don't want to take Twenty-Fifth Street entirely out of the picture, but we're really going to use Thirty-seventh Street. As it turned out, an agreement with the Melchers and Majestic Lake for access on Thirty-seventh Street did not materialize. Instead, one of the developers, Mr. Merkel and his company, agreed to permit Majestic Lake traffic to use that land to access Thirty-seventh Street. At the city council meeting on September eighteen, the developers specifically came before you and told you that they had made a commitment to use Thirty-seventh Street. We thought that was an excellent development, but we had asked this council to provide some sort of assurance for us that the developers would not flip back to Twenty-Fifth Street if something else changed. Well, here we are, we're back at Twenty-Fifth Street and without much evidence and without a planning commission consideration of the evidence and arguments of all parties, they're asking you to just please take out the Thirty-seventh Street requirement once again. I think that at this point, we have to say that the developers intended to use Twenty-Fifth Street all along and that section eighteen of the plan development language, the way it was written before you amended it at the last meeting, was a way for them to try to keep the Twenty-Fifth Street possibility in play. So we ask you to... So we ask you to vote against 5507. The problem with this development all the way along, and the position of my clients and the neighbors who are also here, is not that the Majestic Lake development is wrong, but rather that they would not object to it so long as the 25th Street did not come into play. And now here, at a last-minute development, and this information that Mr. Domina spoke to us about tonight was not even in your agenda packet. Now, suddenly, based on that, you're supposed to make some sort of decision to let Majestic Lake go on. The flip-flopping has got to stop. Industry and the neighbors need to have to have some assurance that 25th Street is important to you, to protect it the way it is. And so we're going to ask you to not permit this tortured development plan to keep going on and on with 25th Street and 37th Street, and vote down the ordinance. Questions?
Questions for Mr. Fitzgerald?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public question to comment on this? Not, we're going to bring discussion to the council. It looks to me, and Clint, you can tell me if I'm wrong here, but we have a few different options in front of us. One is to consider what is before us currently, which, given the new information, seems to be irrelevant to the project. Two, amend the motion before us related to access to 25th Street and take a yes or no vote. Or three, send back to planning commission and restart the process, so to speak. I'm open to any thoughts or ideas or other options that might be before us, council.
Again, the amendment that occurred, not at the last meeting, but at the previous meeting, when we voted on it, first was, you know, I proposed it and said, that's the only way I could support that. If it does not come back before us and it's not strictly on 37th Street, I see no way that I can support it. And I hear that the development won't go forward. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if it reverts back, it could develop strictly as the zoning allows for it to develop there, for the limited density that would occur back in there. I think that was three or four lots or something like that, if I remember right.
If the zone change does not happen, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, it's zoned agriculture right now, and our code says one per 20 acres, so they could potentially have eight houses out there with ag zoning.
Okay. So, as I stated at the last meeting, that's the only way I could support the thing, is if it was restricted, the access to 37th Street and/or if there was going to be a change on it, that they would have to follow the process and come back before this body again. And without that happening, I can't give the support to it for neither the zoning change nor the conditional use permit.
So, in the past, I've just brought things to the attention of the members of the council in regards to safety issues that I have in mind, that I see. I've talked with Steve about it on a couple of different occasions, the last occasion. If you can help me, Steve, he brought it to my attention, that some of those lots may not even be developed, able to be developed. Do you?
There are a few lots in the northeast corner, they're going to fire a lot.
Okay. So some of them are in the floodwater. And the fact that they want to go and, we've worked really hard in the city, on the city council, to start guiding things along the lines of, when you're building these type of developments, have paved roads, they don't want to have to pave roads. I think that'd be soup kitchen mud hole out there in a bad rain, where you have a hard time getting out, having a safety crew get in there. It'd be difficult to do. And as far as the 25th Street access, time and time again, I've said that we need to take the wishes of the big businesses in the area that are in the industrial site, which is all down in there, is zoned industrial. We need to take their wishes into consideration, too, because these are areas that they look to expand and develop, and if we start putting housing areas down there, then there's going to be, down the road, there's going to be an argument that they don't want industrial down there. And if it gets to the point where they can't expand without resistance, places that aren't expanding aren't growing here. They can grow other places, but they won't be growing here. And I just think that that in itself is a big enough reason to withstand not having it go on 25th Street. So I can't support this either.
I think Norfolk needs housing, and this is a great opportunity to carry something like that out. They're not asking for TIF money, they're doing it on their own, and it comes down to, we've been talking about 25th Street, which is a public street. How can we say some guys can drive on 25th Street and others can't? How can we pick that? That is, that's a head scratcher.
And I would base my response to that basically on, okay, we're increasing the density down here. We need the housing. The housing can happen there for, as I believe as Val stated, we could do eight units down there. Got no problem with that occurring that way. That traffic can flow out to 25th Street. That isn't that, you know, it's not that dense. It's ag down there. There was a reason it was ag. They want to increase the density considerably here, and it isn't good to take that kind of density out onto that street. It has nothing to do with who can or who can't use it, but it's all about safety issues down there, intermingling of it, and 37th Street was a viable option. One lender has told them that it's not viable, so, you know, if, you know, I've never had a good feeling about this as far as 25th Street was coming out of the picture, as long as we weren't getting it in solid writing for us on it. And that's, you know, we may differ on our opinions on who's supposed to be using the street, but I'm saying that kind of density is not appropriate to be used on that street with the other uses that are occurring there.
Can we just kind of approve that just when that new division's popping up, just right by the D.C. Center? Yes, we were trying to work through another option of opening up the street, but still, density is density. How many is too much, and how many isn't?
With this development, we're talking thirty houses, right? Wasn't that the?
It was thirty.
Thirty, yeah. So I mean, I can appreciate what you're saying, Jim, but the thirty houses, now, not so many years ago, I think it was probably ten, fifteen years ago, I think, the Gerhold brothers tried to develop that land. We were made aware of that, and they tried to put two hundred and some houses in there. I think that's what they were trying to do. It was going to be high-density subdivision. So I do see what, I can see both what you guys are saying, but it's a thirty-house subdivision. So the density, in my opinion, is not, it's not a make or break deal. It's not a lot of cars. If they're putting two hundred houses back there, then you're going to have some, you know, that's really going to change that intersection. So, but thirty houses, in my opinion, just isn't a lot of cars during the day.
Lots one through nine, all along the river, and that's a pretty big concern. You look at the fact that they've got to have at least three acres to put a septic tank and a well down, and then once that starts to eat away, which it always does, then that would bring the question, can you have, still have a septic tank and a well there? And I asked last time if they were going to put anything in there to shore those banks up, as far as rocks or riffraff, and they said, no, but yet we're spending, because they said it wasn't a concern, and yet we're spending a million, what, how much are we spending on the shore of the railroad bridge down there?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. And that's to keep a railroad bridge up. That's, nobody lives there. I'm concerned for the safety of the people building there, as well as the businesses that are down there. There's a lot of things in consideration, and it's been back and forth, and we're going to do it, not going to do it. It's too much, too many flip-flopping changes, and it just needs to be done. I think we need houses. There's lots of places around Norfolk to build houses without building along industrial tracks.
I don't know if you've been, drove down 275 and driven by Blue Water Development by Valley. It's a gorgeous development, kind of like this, but it's not, it's got a little more paving in it, but it's gorgeous in the, but it's on water. You know, that's what, that's what people are looking for, looking for that water wreck. So I mean, yeah, we've got areas to develop, but this is kind of a different monster. It's a water wreck development. And then there's also, just south of Columbus, on 81, I mean, we drive, that's a lot more density there. That's another development that, you know, as soon as they come open, people are in there trying to buy lots. We are just on the cusp of that in our community, of having those type of waterfront development. We haven't had that since Andy's Lake or Cedar Lake, which was probably, what, twenty years ago? Twenty to maybe fifteen years ago? So we haven't had those type of lots in this community, and I think now with the Medelman's development going through, and maybe this development tonight, depending on how it feels, we kind of get ourselves in the same playing field as some of these other communities that have these developments already. You know, and you just don't, these guy, these type of guys that come out and want to do these sort of things, you know, it takes a lot of guts, a lot of courage to even try to put those, because there's a lot of risk when it goes into it. Fortunately, we have two developers in town right now that are willing to do that for our community. You know, really, it's, yes, and they're developers, obviously, but the big picture, you know, gives our community some more options, you know, for these people that we're trying to recruit here and move here, and then they have a little more opportunity to pick those lots. So, right now, there's lots in Norfolk, kind of slim pickings, really, so.
Hey, council, it sounds like the discussion now is centering on the merits of the project itself. We are in kind of an unusual place, given the ordinance before us to be considered and in light of the information that was just shared with us by Mr. Domina. So looking for some direction on how we handle this. I heard arguments both for and against 25th Street access. I believe an option would be, if you wanted it to be, to bring an amendment to change this plant, the final plan development, to change the access to 25th and have a vote, yes or no, on that, or restart the process, so to speak, send it back to planning commission or table it, and have the discussion another day and see what might develop with another financer, financier's decision on this. Looking for direction and thoughts on what we do with what's before us right now.
I'm wondering whether for, in the normal course of business, whether for clarity, we might want to just push this back to the planning commission, and let's wipe that slate clean, let's see what's before us, so that this body can make a determination without all of this other stuff in the way. I don't know, adds to the process a little bit, lengthens it a little bit, but I think we may get a clean ordinance to look at.
In that regard?
In that regard, yes.
Your motion would be to refer back to planning commission?
Mine would be, yes.
Given new information? Any other thoughts?
I don't think that's necessarily what they're looking for. What they're looking for is to have it amended back to their original without the amendment that we agreed on and to vote that way. That obviously said they were going to use 37th Street, but gives them, I guess, an open, as Jim stated, to use 25th Street, which I, in reality, it does. It gives them an open to use 25th Street if that, if it comes to it, but their initial charge was to use 37th. I believe that's the direction they want to go. Maybe Mr. Domina or one of the owners could give us a little input if they'd rather it go back to the planning commission or rather it just go back to the way they initially had this in front of us before the amendment and us go ahead and vote on it. I do want to state one other thing that Mr. Jackson brought up. The businesses are not against this housing, not at all, and they've said that from the very beginning. They're not against this housing at all. They're only against the 25th Street access. So for any statements to say that, that big businesses are against this housing, it's a hundred percent false. It's only against the 25th Street.
I didn't say that. The one thing I did see was down the road, I see an issue if they dis...
Either way, either way, there can be housing in there right now, either way. So we'll agree to disagree, but go ahead, Mr. Domina. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd be very brief in responding to Councilman Granquist's observation. I want to be clear that the developers do not think they can build out 37th Street, do not expect that to change. Sometimes these projects, as you've seen before, I'm sure, do too much effort. People work too hard to try to make them fit and work, and that might be a fair criticism here. I don't know. That would be for someone other than me to pass judgment on, but what we don't want you to do is to approve 37th Street believing they can build that because they can't. So as I see it, Mr. Mayor, probably the choices before you are vote down what's before you or, as you have said, amend to take out 37th Street, but not leave, take out 37th Street, not leave it as primary or anything of that kind, so it's kind of black and white on this, or refer it back to see if some other solution can be found. And of those choices, all we would say about our preference is don't vote in favor of the current proposal before you, believing that 37th Street will be done because it won't. It can't. That's the new piece of information we wanted to make clear to you. Okay? Thank you.
Again, council, what's before us is the final plan development as amended on the council meeting, at the council meeting on November 6. We have a choice to make.
Well, I'm going to ask one more question, I guess, then. So if we, if we vote it down, per their request, I guess, in a way, because of the 37th Street issue, they can come back in front of planning commission anyway in six months, correct? Does that sound right, Clint? And if we changed it back to the original, make an amendment to change it back to the original, and that would still possibly get voted down, we still end up in the same result? So, what, I'm just thinking, so there's no real reason to change it at this point?
Do they have any delay either way on what he just proposed, where there's a two-month delay or three-month delay? Can they go right back to the planning commission if it does get voted down?
Yes. It's my opinion that if there is a, if it is not advanced, no matter if it's what's before the council on the plan development now, or if you amend it to something else and then that is not ultimately passed, that, the plan development is a zoning action. If that is not approved by the council, then nothing can come back in six months, six months from now. They could go back to the, start whatever process is desired back at the planning commission again.
But you do have to wait six months.
If there is a, if there is a denial of a zoning matter, plan development, zoning change, whichever, then six months before, it can start over at the planning commission with the clean slate that somebody mentioned.
If, Clint, the motion was made to refer this back to planning commission, effectively that... effectively that is a withdrawal of this application, correct?
Well, I think that, I think the applicants can withdraw the application. Um, I'm, and when Mr. Domina references, I'm not exactly sure what the planning commission is supposed to do with it, the planning commission has had an application before it, uh, they've made a recommendation, everybody's heard this, so, uh, I'm not exactly sure what, what, what the planning commission is supposed to do with that, I, I'm kinda looking for some more clarity.
The slate would be cleaned up, it would be starting up, or basically, it'd be starting up, if there was anything to be started up.
If, I, I think that there's, there's three ways the slate starts over clean at the planning commission. It's a denial, if, if you vote on the plan development and do not approve it, that would start it over in the planning commission with whatever the applicant, if they chose to make an application again in six months.
Six months.
If you were to amend the, um, motion that was passed on first reading, the ordinance that approved the final plan development, which, um, the developers said they don't want you to do, but if, or, if you, if you approve that, but if you, the other option you have is to amend to that, uh, ordinance that you approved on first reading, and then if for some reason that was not approved, that would also take you back to the six months. Uh, the other thing that wipes the slate clean is if the, uh, if, if the developers were to stand up and say, I withdraw my application, they could go back to the planning commission with a clean slate and start over with whatever they want to do. If, if this body were to say, refer it back to the planning commission, you've still got the same application, the planning commission has heard it, has talked about that, I'm not exactly sure what the planning commission is supposed to do with it, I don't know if it's, if I'm just missing something, if it's clear to you, Val, or Andy, what that is, uh, I'm not exactly sure what you would be asking that to do, if that makes sense.
So, if they withdraw it and go back to the planning commission, do they have to wait six months? Is that the only way they don't have to?
Just if it's voted down.
The answer to your question is, if they don't have, if they withdraw it, they don't have to wait six months.
On both of these votes, it has to be a supermajority, right?
One vote.
Or either, either situation.
Well, here's, here's where we're at, there is still a protest in effect-
Yes.
-as defined under state statute. Um, it's my opinion, and if you go back to the November sixth meeting, there was an application to amend the ordinance to approve the, uh, plan development, you may recall, and when that amendment was first voted on, it was a four to four vote, we turned to the mayor, the mayor broke the tie. I think that there does not need to be a supermajority to amend the motion. If you amend the motion from the way that it is, on, was approved on first reading, and you subsequently vote on the ordinance on second reading, as it might be amended, then it takes us, uh, six affirmative votes to pass the ordinance on second reading.
So, no supermajority on any amendment, but supermajority on the underlying ordinance, if amended, or not?
So, you could pass your amendment, but then when you vote again, okay?
Yeah.
Think I kinda, think I'm clear?
You can pass, you can pass an amendment to the ordinance just before the body, without, with, with just a simple majority, with not, with, with not the three-fourths requirement. If you vote on the ordinance then on second reading after you've had amended, then it takes six.
Okay, so I think that's, if I'm not, I feel like that's what we're being asked, maybe I'm wrong. That, that almost makes little sense, I guess, in a way, because the way it was originally in front of us wasn't needed with a supermajority, which is what we'd amend it back to, you know what I mean? So, for it not to need a supermajority both ways seems-
No, it, it, on the, on the vote, if you were to amend what's before us-
Mm-hmm.
-that, that's a simple majority, but-
That's what I'm saying, but if we, if we amended what's before us, the way we would amend it is back to the way it was originally brought before us, which really did need a supermajority.
Well, but there's, there's two parts to that, if you were, may I, if you were to, if you were to amend that back to the way that you said it was, you would vote first to amend the ordinance that was before you, that was approved on first reading, to do something different than what it's doing. Then, after, if you had by enough, by a majority vote, changed the ordinance, then you would vote a second time to approve or reject the ordinance on the second reading. That second vote is the one-
Okay.
-that takes the six votes.
Agreed, yeah, I-
I think, uh, most of us can agree that the new information presented here tonight is unfortunate, and that the, uh, lender's decision to decline involvement in the project if, if thirty-seventh street access is, uh, required, um, is, uh, the spirit of that runs contrary to a good amount of public input that was had, um, over this more than year-long process. I think we all felt that one time we were close to the finish line here, and we're hopeful we were close to coming to a decisive vote, one way or, one way or another. Um, now, i- i- it's, it's time for the, the council to decide with what's been laid before you, what direction do you wanna take? Take a vote on thi, on this ordinance before us as it is? Um, seek to amend it to an original form or otherwise, or refer back, uh, to planning commission, which I think Clint made, um, valued, valid argument, if it goes back to planning commission in this, this form, they ha, they have seen it before, but they, they will be seeing it again, and perhaps other, other things might develop in the meantime, or, or table, that, table this, uh, once again, is always an option, so, it's, those options are, are before you, and we need to provide some direction and, and take action.
Clint, I appreciate your comments on the planning commission side of this, I mean, if we wanted something that was coming back to the planning commission that would be clean and new, that we're not going to get that without these gentlemen saying, get rid of it, we don't want it, take it off and make it go away. It would seem to be, if we're gonna go back to the planning commission, that would, would be the only way to do it, because they don't have anything new to look at. So, I would ask you guys, what do you want?
Gentlemen, I think that the, the Majestic Lake developer thinks you should vote up or down on thirty-seventh street. Knowing that it's unavailable, do you want to approve a project that requires something that cannot be done? And they're doubtful that that would be good policy.
Would they rather us go back and amend it to the original, where twenty-fifth is old, is on the table, or would they rather have us hand it back?
I think, uh, Mr. Shukai is right, that it doesn't really make any difference which way you go about that, as long as there's a vote one way or the other on this to either proceed on the basis that it's gonna be built with twenty-fifth street access, yes or no? But make a decision that is, that is clear and decisive, and a good, clear decision is really what they want. So, it's not an appeal for you tonight to change your point of view, it's, I'm not offering a new argument about that, but it's very important that you know that they can't do thirty-seventh street. Okay? Thank you.
So, that, counsel, it is, um, your determination on whether, at this point in the discussion, with what you anticipated to be, um, considered tonight, um, to make a, a switch, a substantive change, and offer an amendment for, um, an alternative access, which we've heard much public discussion on over the last year, um, whether this is the right, right time and avenue to, to make that decision, that's, that's your determination to make, but it would require an amendment, um, to what's before us, uh, to take that vote. Or you go back, or you revert back to the starting point?
On the bank, you know, saying they wouldn't, uh, finance thirty-seventh street, when was that brought forward? And there, I don't see anything, I haven't seen anything in here on the agenda that must have overlooked it.
That was, that was just brought up by Mr. Domina tonight, so.
Tonight, yes.
I think, uh, reluctantly, um, I'll probably end up making the motion for consideration tonight, and hopefully in six months, on the way it looks right now, this would probably get turned down, um, mostly because, I mean, the owners obviously said they can't finance this going down thirty-seventh street, and that's the way it's written right now. So, hopefully in six months, um, if this is still their ambition to do so, um, something can get worked out between, uh, business, um, property owners to, to the east there on twenty-fifth street, and, and, and something can move forward with some sort of development. Not a fun decision, because I think it, it just delays something that, that could happen, but, uh, hopefully it'll work out in the end in this way. So, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-five oh seven.
There is, that, that is currently the motion, that is currently what's, what's before us, so.
I, I would rather amend it, no, no disrespect, because that is what's on the table, I would rather amend it to something that we can u, I can't, I can't vote on something that I know is already gonna be a failure, which Mr. Domina already said, it's gonna, it's not gonna happen, so I, I don't wanna vote on some, I don't wanna vote on something that's gonna be a failure if I vote for it. I would rather amend it and go back to the table where it's something that they can work with, or they, they'd lose and have to go back. I'd rather have a, a result tonight, rather than give them something, say, here you go, and they go, we already told you can't use it, so, I would rather amend it, Corey, but it's, it's up to the rest of you guys, what you wanna do.
I can appreciate that, Dave.
Don't, don't we oftentimes vote on things where the outcome is fairly clear?
Fairly clear, but when the, when the people were changing it for and asked us to change it, say, don't do that anymore, because it's not gonna work? I've not had that happen very often, and, and I respect them running into a roadblock and telling us that a boulder just fell in front of them, they can't get over it, so we don't vote them to try and drive through it, and they cannot do anything with it. I'd rather vote it down, so they can start the process, which they could the other way, but, but it's already passed. I'd rather vote with something they want to have happen, which is twenty-fifth street, we can vote it down, or we can pass it, or they go back to planning commission, not hand them something that they've already said we can't work with, that's what I'm trying to do there.
Right, right now, we, we currently have a motion on the table, right, just looking for a second, so if there's no second-
No, there's a second.
If there was a second.
But now we're, we're, somebody needs to make the motion to, if you're gonna amend it, it needs to be a motion to amend.
Yeah.
I think we pick this hand out early now, uh, it, it's been a long time, we've heard both sides, I think, uh, it's time to make a vote on it, so, uh, I'll make the motion to, uh, remove thirty-seventh and make twenty-fifth, so we have a lot of options. Motion on the floor?
Okay, motion to amend ordinance number fifty-five oh seven to, um, revise, is it provision eighteen? Is it number eighteen?
Yes.
Uh, to revise access from thirty-seventh street to twenty-fifth street? Is that correct, councilman?
That is correct. There already a motion on the floor, it's been-
This is a-
This is a, this is a motion for-
No, amendment, it's fine.
Amendment, motion for amendment takes priority.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Beth, do you have an amendment? Okay, okay, do you wanna state it? So, everybody's clear, are you?
No, you stated it just fine.
Okay, we're good, is everybody good?
State it one more time.
Okay.
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, a motion to amend ordinance number fifty-five oh seven to revise provision number eighteen, changing access from thirty-seventh street to twenty-fifth street. Fair? Okay, we're open for any further discussion on that? If there's none, please vote.
Voting in favor of amendment to ordinance number fifty-five oh seven, council members Granquist, Merrill, Clausen, Faust file, voting against the amendment, Langy, Muirin, and Jackson. Motion for amendment passes.
Okay, so your ordinance has been changed to what was stated, the adopted amendment. We're back open for discussion on the yes or no vote.
So, now we're back to face with the original development, plan development of twenty-fifth?
The same final plan development as you see before you, with one change, thirty-seventh street to twenty-fifth street.
So, now you're back to the, they have to have, uh, what is it, about six to two vote?
Yes. Yes, this next one needs to pass with a supermajority of six votes. Yeah.
Further discussion on this, counsel? Okay, if you're ready to vote, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance number fifty-five oh seven as amended using, uh, twenty-fifth street as access, uh, voting in favor of the, and the ordinance, council members Merrill, Clausen, Muirin, Faust file, voting against it, Granquist, Langy, and Jackson, motion fails.
Okay, that moves us to item number twenty-five, for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-four forty-seven approving the zoning change from agricultural district to suburban rural, suburban residential unproperty generally located a half mile south from the intersection of Omaha Avenue and South Twenty-Fifth Street. This ordinance was passed on first reading at the May first meeting, was tabled at the May fifteenth meeting, tabled again at September eighteenth meeting, and ordinance number fifty-four forty-seven passed on second reading at the November sixth city council meeting, was again tabled at the November twentieth city council meeting. So, looking for, um, a motion, or not, to, uh, pull off the table.
I'll make the motion.
To the table?
Okay. Motion in a second, to pull the zoning change request off the table, any discussion?
Again, a, um, the, the zoning change would have to, or should reflect, well, I guess the zoning change doesn't have to reflect the, uh, the plat as it's showing there right now, or the layout, because it's, uh, not in conformance with zoning regulations, even, even going to, to this, because the community, or the plan unit development gave relief of setbacks and street whiffs and stuff like that, but that has nothing to, would not deal, and Clint correct me if I'm wrong, that would not have an effect on the zoning change.
No, I think that that's what Val was talking about earlier. The plat, I'm going to talk about both these things together, because I think it'll make more sense. The plat that's before you, which is the next item, the plat really, the plat as it was prepared reflects modifications in the plan development as to setback, street width. I think those are the major ones that would say that, that you've really got a problem if you would create, if you would approve the plat without the plan development. The, the other discussion there is the ordinance fifty-four forty-seven, which is the, the zoning change, that doesn't depend upon the plat.
Correct. That's what I was getting at. But what it does do is allow then for the maximum number and size, the small size units and the maximum no, number of units, even more than the thirty, to occur in there if it goes, if the zoning change goes to, as suggested here. And so, I mean, it, it, it could mean that there could be sixty units in there.
Yeah, if you pass the SR zoning with water and sewer right out there on Twenty-Fifth Street, kind of where they're wanting to connect to now, you could potentially bring in sewer and they would not have that three-acre minimum for septics, and you could have a twelve-thousand-square-foot lot out there.
Again, a reminder, council, we're not yet at that part of the discussion, this is a motion as to whether we bring this item off the table or not. And there's no, as Beth noted, there is no discussion on third reading. So, if you did move to take this off the table, we could not, but open back up for discussion. Any further discussion on the motion to pull off the table?
I'm looking at what's the most practical thing to do right now, because you just basically killed the development tonight, right? Essentially, I mean, just looking at it that way. Or it has to go back to the drawing board or back? So, now what's the best thing to do? Because it's kind of... It's just kind of a...
You can vote, you can vote no on pulling it off the table, which leaves it on the table. Yeah.
Okay. As I'm thinking through this, the vote that you just took on the previous item, which failed because of the supermajority is in the effect of a zoning change. The zoning change, that, that prohibits, that is, the, the plan development is a zoning change, so that prohibits any, any new application for a period of six months. If you were to not take this off the table, then, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, if you do not take this off the table, it remains on the table, and if it's never taken off, it will eventually die there. Okay? The other option is for you to take it off the table, vote it, vote on it. You've got the issue that Councilman Langy says, if you vote on it and approve it, you allow, or what Val was talking about with the density issues. If you were to consider the ordinance and, and vote, vote against the ordinance, it's, that would put you in the place, would put the developers, I think, in the place where they already are with the failure of the plan development. That says a new application for the property cannot come back for a period of six months. And somebody else may disagree with that, but I think that's where we're at.
So, basically where we're at is, I would say vote it off the table, let it all come back in six months as a package. Submit it all as a package down the road, six months from now. Would make more sense than letting it lay around.
Or leave it on the table and it doesn't change. Still. That's the motion before us, so.
Motion is to put it on the table?
To poke, to pull off the table, to con, to then consider.
Okay.
Or leave it on the table for later consideration or no consideration at all. So, any other discussion, council, on whether to pull off the table? If not, please vote.
Hold on, what?
Okay. Point, point of clarification?
Well, yeah, exactly what?
This, so the, so what, what you're voting on is whether to hold this off the table in order to consider the zone change.
Okay.
So, pulling off the table would allow us to consider the next step, which is the ordinance making the zone change. Voting no would leave it on the table for consideration at some point in the future or not. Okay? Good?
Ready.
Please vote.
Voting to take ordinance number fifty-four forty-seven off the table, council members Langy, Merrill, voting against the motion. Council members Granquist, Clausen, Murin, Jackson, Faust, and File, motion fails.
Okay. Moving to item number twenty-six, consideration of resolution number twenty-seventeen dash seventy-nine approving the final plat subdivision agreement post-construction stormwater management plan maintenance agreement and easement for Majestic Lake Estates. Resolution number twenty-seventeen dash seventy-nine was tabled at the November sixth and twentieth city council meetings. Do I see a motion to pull off the table?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay. Again, a motion on whether to pull off the table or not. Final plat is directly related to the final plan development. As a note in background, Val or Clint, anything you want to say on that? Are we getting a question on it, the plat's relation to the final, plan development? Any questions on that, what, what exactly we're considering here, council? Okay? If no disc, no discussion, please vote.
Voting to take resolution twenty-seventeen seventy-nine off the table, council members Langy, Merrill, voting against the motion, council members Granquist, Clausen, Murin, Jackson, Faust, File, motion fails.
So, it's gone, is it?
Yes. Remains undecided. That concludes the regular agenda portion of the meeting. We do reserve time at this point for a public comment period. Anyone wishing to come for, forward with general public comment may do so. Seeing none, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council.